I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a moment of silence, please? Go, Meg.
Council President Sturz.
Here.
Councillor Coles.
Here.
Councillor Shamp.
Here.
Councillor Chamberlain.
Present.
Councillor Sturz.
Here.
Councillor Fry.
Here.
All members are present. We have a call.
We have approval of the prior meetings minutes.
Second.
Motion moved by Council President Sturz and second by Councillor Coles. Council President Sturz.
Yes.
Councillor Coles.
Yes.
Councillor Shamp.
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain.
Yes.
Councillor Sturz.
Yeah.
Councillor Fry. Five yeas, one abstain. Motion carries.
Okay, individuals wishing to speak tonight, we have on the agenda Ellen Smith, the Deputy Director for Mommy Valley Planning Organization. Ellen?
And you're here to talk about the US bicycle routes throughout Ohio? Yes.
Okay, you want to go up to the, I guess it's best place for us to do some stuff for us?
Yes. I believe you have the map. I didn't know if you guys made copies of that map I sent over as well. I made it more. Oh, you got it there? Okay, great. Yeah, okay, great.
Thanks, Meg. I always get the skinny down in the back.
Well, great. Thank you for having me. I am Ellen Smith, Deputy Director of Mommy Valley Planning Organization, and I'm just here to tell you tonight about a proposed project by the Ohio Department of Transportation to designate state and US bike routes throughout Ohio. So I'd like to tell you about the project and take any questions that you might have, and then hopefully get your support tonight through a resolution, which I sent you prior to the meeting. So in your packet, I'm just gonna, this will be really brief, but I'm just gonna take you through, and I wanted you to have it in case you wanted to refer to it after the meeting, on this packet. Usually I start off my presentation by explaining who Mommy Valley Planning is, but I know you guys are already very familiar with who we are. We're working with you on several projects. I do want to just highlight a couple of things. We are the Fair Housing Organization for the, our office for the region, and so if you ever have any fair housing complaints come in, you can feel free to call our office or send those individuals our way. I brought some brochures with you tonight, or for you tonight, to leave with you, and if I could get a copy of the sign-in sheet, just to doc, do you have a sign-in sheet that you guys do, or who's present?
Yes.
If I could get a copy of that email to me, that would be wonderful, just to document that I did drop these off to you guys. And also, we are a regional transportation planning organization now that's fairly newer, and so I always like to tell people about that when I come out to your meetings. We offer transportation technical services now, so if you ever have any transportation needs in the city, if you have a project that you want to apply for funding for, I write grant applications for transportation programs. So a lot of the ODOT programs I write applications for, and I also do traffic counting, so if you need a traffic count on a road, we offer those services for free. And also, if you have any safety concerns in the city, if you think there's an intersection that you'd like a crash analysis on, or want to go after a funding for, I can help you with that too. So keep us in mind for any of your project needs that you might have. So I'll start then on the second page of your packet there. So the reason that ODOT is deciding to designate a network of state and US bike routes is because they are responding to a national initiative to designate these routes throughout the nation. The American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials, or ASHTO, is the organization that's in charge of this initiative. They have decided to help states designate state and US bike routes, so that one day you might be able to bike all the way from California to Washington DC. I don't know who would really want to do that, but you'll be able to if you want to. And so, so ODOT wanted to take advantage of that, because also biking has gone up about 24% in the nation since 1998. And so, you know, as you guys know, you have the Wabash Cannonball Trail here. Biking is very important to communities, so that's why ODOT's doing this init, taking this initiative and doing this project. And so, basically, what they're doing is they're going to be applying to ASHTO to get these net, this network designated. And this is not a construction project, I like to make that clear. ODOT is not going around and building a bunch of new facilities. The purpose is to identify the best routes today as is and designate those. So moving on then to the next slide there, you guys already know this. You have the Wabash. Bike routes are important because they can foster economic development, and they support your local tourism, and they help regions grow. So if you turn to the next page there, that map, Proposed Ohio Bike Routes, that shows the whole network that ODOT is proposing. So that's made up of state and US bike routes. ODOT's interested in not only connecting to other states through these routes, but also the larger cities with other cities in the, in the state. So that's where they're doing both the US and state routes. And basically, what they did was, they proposed an initial network of routes. That was back in the fall of 2015. And they had the planning organizations throughout Ohio look the routes over, and we actually had the Northwest Ohio Peddlers Club go out and ride the route that they had proposed. And they made some changes, and that map that I, I sent to you all that you have tonight is the proposed route that we have looked over for ODOT. So that's on the next page there. So it's going to be called State Bicycle Route 90. And as you can see through our region, it's mostly made up of the Wabash Cannonball Trail. And then where the trail goes off, or ends, it goes on-road in Williams County on some county roads. So in Wasion, of course, it's the Wabash Cannonball Trail that's being proposed. So I'm here tonight to ask for your support through a resolution. Right now in the process, we are gathering resolutions of support from all the owners of the route. This is not financial support whatsoever, no financial commitment on the city's part. This is just to say that you support the project and you think it's a good idea, and that you overall support ODOT's efforts. So after we gather all these resolutions of support, ODOT will be applying in the spring for designation. Are there any questions?
And I may have missed it, but the benefit of the designation, what's ultimately there?
Yeah, ultimately, they want to encourage more bicycling. And so they want to be, you know, if you, State Bike Route 90, the, the goal is to have it signed eventually as a state bike route, and ODOT has said that they anticipate purchasing the signs for all the routes, but the first step is to get the routes designated. Yeah, so it, you know, eventually I think they want to have a, a map, you know, or brochures or something, and then with, you know, you can show little spurs off the route to where local restaurants are and things like that.
So when these bicyclists are going through and they, they see, you know, more or less what is needed in some of the villages and cities that they're riding through, like maybe there's some more signage that needs to be put up at certain intersections that might be heavily trafficked, so they're gonna end up, would ODOT be willing then to put in more in that respect? Or how would that work? Are they gonna come back to the city and say, "You need to do this," or the, you know, how would that work?
Right, and that's a really good question, and ODOT, I've asked ODOT that question, and they've said that they anticipate buying the signs. They can't promise it, but you're not signing anything saying that you're gonna sign this route a certain way. You know, they wouldn't be able to force you to sign a route just because it was designated. So that's the answer I've been given. I also use, we do have one US route in Ohio. It's US Bike Route 50, and ODOT did purchase all the signs and installed all the signs for that route. So we're using that as our example. They haven't been able to give us a definite answer on that, but it's just because they don't have it designated yet.
Ellen? The section between County Road 11 and County Road 13 where you're jumping onto County Road 8, how come not stay on the trail there?
That is what I was given by NORDA. They're the ones who provided me with the information there, because as far as I knew, there's a railroad crossing there that isn't... Yeah, it's not developed, and so you have to go on-road to get over that railroad crossing.
That's where the other railroad out here crosses, and there's no way to cross that railroad there. There is, it's just safe.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you so much for having me. And I will leave these, where would you like me to leave the brochures for you?
Okay, we'll take them.
Oh, okay.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. We have a tree commission.
Yes, the Wasion Tree Commission met on January 11th with all members present. As part of an outline that some of us that went to the classes that Stephanie Miller has given, she's given us an outline as to what we may file in our monthly meetings. One of them is to review the ordinance that we have and to see if the, we should maybe set other standards or other update things as we see them. So we reviewed the ordinance 1986-10, Chapter 159. We also reviewed a list of trees that we typically plant in the city in looking to update this list, maybe add some of them. We're meeting Wednesday, I believe. So I have a whole list of trees that we've typically planted in the past and maybe add more to that. We were also advised a Tree City USA award ceremony is going to be on Lakeside this year in April. Kim Bowles has submitted an article on the benefits of trees to the expositor, and I think she's gonna try to do that either on a monthly basis or quarterly, something like that. And Larry Frye reported to us that he has a list of about 25 to 30 trees to be removed this winter. He's gonna be bringing that list Wednesday to us to review that. That's about it. No recommendations.
Questions?
The tree trimming that's going on right now within the city, that is not city...
No, they're, they're, right. Coming in for...
Madison.
Because I fielded some questions in regards to that, so I just want to reassure you, because that's not a city operation, so.
And that's sometimes not our typical techniques.
Although they do say, "I got a notice because they're gonna terminate my backyard." They, they, they are using the ANSI standards in what they say they're doing, but they're not actually doing. I've witnessed different ways that they have done it, and they're not doing it right.
Is that the V?
Well, the V, can't, how they're, what they're doing is clear in mind, but they're, one of the things they're doing is leaving a stud instead of cutting out a better collar, but... Those kind of things, and it just promotes more growth at those spots.
I have a question. Rick, the 2017 budget is the same as 16, the 5,000, and that comes out of the Public Works Department, correct?
Right, for, for planting.
For planting.
Right.
Planting only, correct?
That's what, that's what I had understood always.
Okay. I'm, I'm just wondering if there's something, maybe some discrepancy with that budget as to what all can be utilized for that? Just, is that just for purchasing?
That's what I've understood in the past. I could be wrong.
Is that, okay.
I mean, there's a new tree line in that budget.
I just, I want to make sure that, that, that they have, you know, that it's understood the purchase and everything else with, with the trees as far as the budget on that, so we don't have any issues like we did the last time. Maybe this is a good time, maybe that we can have Dave come in and they can discuss that, so everyone's on the same page.
For what's...
With the budget on that. Okay, that was the only question I had. Any other questions? And no more committee reports then? Next one waits to the... Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to departmental reports. Rick?
I really have nothing at this time, other than the county fire sufferers, the 21st, and if you didn't get your reservation in, let me know tonight. I'll still get that in or call them that in here in just a little bit.
What's the date on that?
21st, February 21st.
I want to thank you for the appreciation. That was a very good dinner.
Very good.
That's it? Anything for Chief? Okay, Chief Torrit.
Just a couple of things. First, I talked to you last time about the grants that we had available, the JAG LE, we just got notified we did not receive funding for that. It's one of those that they have a little bit of money and a lot of requests for, because that's one of the few that you can actually buy equipment out of. So it's about every two to three years, we end up getting that funding, so hopefully next year we will get positive funding on that again. And secondly, the 17th of February, 7:30 to 8:30, we're doing Coffee with the Cop at the Upper Crust. That's our tentative date. The officer that was handling that is out on sick leave. He had a kidney surgery. I wasn't able to confirm that he has made those arrangements, but if for some reason something changes, we will let you know.
That's the 17th?
17th, 7:30, 8:30, and the next one will be in April, and we're gonna try and do a Saturday for that.
French crust and upper crust.
French crust.
Very good.
Take your word on that.
It is good.
Buckle your belt.
All right, Dennis. Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions for the chief?
Okay, working with the school, they're going to, they're connect a fiber cable route with the high school and some of their other buildings. Already springtime building activity, reviewing lot split application, the old Orange subdivision. Mornicky sold out their remaining parcels, and necessitates some, some splitting from the original plant, so we're working with that. Mainly, my, my portion is to secure an easement for the city to the stormwater detention project there. Also, with the help of Mr. McWaters, reviewing the agreement for the Mommy Valley Planning Organization for planning services for the city. We received a draft form of the Phase 2 environmental report for the Rich property down on West Chestnut Street. That's fascinating reading. It's like 407 pages. That includes all the attachments and stuff, but it's still, it's, uh...
You think our council president should read that? Can't read.
Including a quiz. Also, the FC EDC, they're working on a number of projects throughout the county, including this one in the city of Wasion. They've enlisted the, the help of the county CIC in putting together some Phase 1 environmental studies with some various sites and some option agreements here and there that are gonna help get us in, in shape to be more attractive to some prospective businesses. Working with the pool, Karen and I sat down with the pool folks and the architect. We are going to accept the pool bid as it was submitted back last fall, that portion. Contractors agreed to extend this pricing to today, so that will move forward, and waiting on the architect to do the rebidding of the bathhouse part of the project. So we're working with Duquette on that. Work continues out at the wastewater treatment plant or water reclamation plant on the, it's the bio silence, bio silence handling project. We're still waiting on one vendor to come and do a demonstration, do a trial run on, on de-watering equipment out of the water plant. They're working the last few bugs, hopefully out of their, their SCADA system, which is the automated computer system that helps monitor the plant. At long last, we received EPA approval on our carbon dioxide system, so that's moving forward. Friends at the EPA have promulgated some new regulations for contingency planning for water treatment systems. So we're just working on that fast and furious. Also, there's some new rules promulgated for lead and copper issues, primarily due to legislation that the, the state passed late last year as a result of the flint crisis. Of the Works Department, had a main break last week on Burr Road. It ended up being pretty messy. Gearing up for busy summer there. Been assisting the PD with their evidence room expansion, and helping in the building here with getting ready to move various departments, so things are happening.
You can tell we had an extra week in January, can't you? Any questions for Dennis?
Dennis, I do have a question. We, the committee that was in charge of adding the new benches and new waste receptacle plant, they're ready to move into the planner phase. When we did that with the benches and the waste receptacles, David took care of everything. Who do we, who do we have to take care of that now? Or who do we go to to order these planners?
Well, I will do my best to, to help.
I'll just send you to planner and however you want.
Was David on board at the end, the final, when you guys were making those final decisions?
Thinking what we had decided about the benches and the waste receptacles, and knew that we were probably going with the planners as well.
Is that committee still intact?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, will that just be a committee decision?
Well, it isn't a big decision. We've already decided on the planner. We just need to know. We, we're not the ones that do the ordering. We don't pay for anything.
Oh, what, what, more or less words can be added?
Between myself and Douglas Miller at Mommy Valley Planning, he's, he's essentially doing David's job now, so between the two of us, we can get it now.
And then maybe an update, too, on where we're at with those ADA rams that...
That ball's on Dennis Miller's court. Again, taking over for, as Regional Planning Director, he said that they would bid out the, the project. Engineering's done. Last I spoke with him about it, he was checking with the state to make sure that city revolving loan fund dollars could go to fund that, that portion of the project. I think there was, I think it was $100,000 committed from the city revolving loan fund to go into the project, and assuming that can be used in the next season for this construction season.
So there's just some questions we can get answered.
Okay.
Thank you.
I got a quick question, too. You make a note when you put up the flags, just bring the little banners up in the corner. They want to cover up the flag here. Those ones have a banner, but they're all back.
Do we have the breakfast tables?
It should be, because they use them for the hogs, the same thing.
Yeah, next one.
We've had them up before.
Right.
That is, as far as blacktops are going this summer, we're gonna get them compared, or start doing some of that, too, this summer.
We have been a couple of different places, like $350,000 budgeted for that, yes.
There's a few places that get kind of mad, they get beat too, you know?
Yes.
We had a few years there where everything was good, now it's, they're starting to come apart a little bit.
Does that include coal mines, too, is that, or just a...
No, that's, that's just roads.
Roads.
It's nothing to do with that one.
All right. Anything else? Jamie?
Okay, so I provided the month-end reports for January, including the index survey. We were up 25% from last year for the month of January. It's a good start to the year. I've also been working on putting a committee together for a wellness program to start in the city, hopefully giving our employees a little healthier, and hopefully at some point make our insurance premiums go down if we get something done. So just getting a committee together at this point.
I worked with a county employee this weekend that was walking all over trying to get her steps in, because as that's something the county is doing right now, is trying to get them as a benefit. So hopefully can do this within the city. I think it would be a good idea.
Anything else, probably?
I did speak with Mr. McWaters. He informs me that he did get a copy of an ordinance or resolution from Chief Torrit regarding smoking in the parks, and he is researching that and hopes to bring a proposal and discussion at some point here in the near future.
Hopefully we can get that taken care of before Bossy. Anything else?
Nope.
Anything to add? Okay, great. Let's move on to legislation. Resolution 2017-04, supporting the designation of proposed state bicycle routes by the Ohio Department of Transportation and the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials.
First reading.
Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Shamp and second by Councillor Chamberlain. Is there any discussion? Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council President Sturz?
Yes.
Councillor Coles?
Yes.
Councillor Sturz?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Six shea, zero maize, Resolution 2017-4 passes on first reading.
Resolution 2017-05, accepting the recommendations of the revolving loan fund committee, authorizing the mayor to enter in certain agreements and declare an emergency.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and declare emergency on Resolution 2017-05.
Second.
Motion moved by Council President Sturz and second by Councillor Coles. Is there any discussion? Council President Sturz?
Yes.
Councillor Coles?
Yes.
Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Sturz?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Six shea, zero maize, motion carries.
Final passage. Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Shamp and second by Councillor Sturz. Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Sturz?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Coles?
Yes.
Council President Sturz?
Yes.
Six shea, zero maize, Resolution 2017-5 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Resolution 2017-06, authorizing the mayor to acknowledge receipt of an addendum to the amended agreement for a county-wide emergency management agency and declare an emergency.
Make a motion that we suspend the rules and declare emergency on Resolution 2017-06.
A second.
Motion moved by Councillor Chamberlain and second by Councillor Sturz. Is there any discussion? Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Sturz?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Coles?
Abstaining, clear.
Council President Sturz?
Yes.
Five yeas, one abstain, motion carries.
Final passage.
Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Fry and second by Council President Sturz. Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Council President Sturz?
Yes.
Councillor Coles?
Abstaining.
Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Sturz?
Yes.
Five yeas, one abstain, Resolution 2017-6 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Okay, great. We have nothing under second reading and or third reading. Does anyone have anything for new business? Okay, a couple of things coming up this week. We have, I think the Heart Fund is this Wednesday.
Heart Radio, Thursday.
Thursday. Thursday. And then Saturday night is the Wasian Chamber Gala. If you haven't gotten your tickets, I think there's a few left on that. And one last thing I wanted to bring up, I usually don't do this, but because he was on the park board for many, many years, I wanted to bring up Rex Rice's granddaughter, who Rex has been active in our city for many, many years and on our park board for many, many years. And his granddaughter...
And his granddaughter had liver, um, um, thank you. I can't think of the word.
Yes.
Yes, and just got word there are some complications and possible rejection. So I just wanted counsel, anybody who knows Rex and Rhonda family, to keep them in your thoughts and a little bit of support in that. They live in, I don't know, so far and away, but I, they've been very active in our Waseon programs here and our Parks and Recreation, so I just wanted to extend that out to the city and to our city council. And I think that is about it on that. So we need to have approval of the bills?
Make a motion that we pay the bills. Second.
Motion moved by Councilor Chamberlain and second by Councilor Frye. Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Frye?
Yes.
Councilor Sturz?
Yes.
Councilor Shamp?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Council President Sturz?
Yes.
Six shades, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay, we have a motion to go into executive session for personal compensation. Personal compensation.
Second motion to go into exec, executive session.
Second. Oh, you got it there?
No.
No, second.
Motion moved by Councilor.
Keller.
Thank you. Couldn't read my notes. Councilor Coats and second by Councilor Chamberlain to enter into executive session. Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council President Sturz?
Yes.
Councilor Shamp?
Yes.
Councilor Sturz?
Yes.
Councilor Frye?
Yes.
Six shades, zero nays. Motion carries.